Welcome to another episode of Minutematters at the Decodin brought to you by Shock Safe and Lock. I'm Jonathan Starr. Today, we continue our interviews that we are doing with some of the Ward County Commission candidates. And this time we're with an incumbent, Shelley Weppler. Thank you for joining us today, Shelley.
Thank you for having me. Thanks for the ask.
Absolutely. Been looking forward to this interview. So we know you from sitting behind the board at the commission. We get to see that and now we get to kind of see you in a different spot. Obviously, you're involved in a lot of things. So before we jump into the hard hitting questions that are going to make us all very uncomfortable today, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Oh, boy, I could, I could do the hour. But I'll try to in a nutshell, but I do like to start from the beginning because it is why I'm here.
Yeah.
And my folks moved here from Fargo, North Dakota when I was four.
Wow.
So yeah, that goes back. So I think that's important because it shows that I'm not a four generation.
Right.
Now I am, I have kids here, but so they, and, and we were in the Edison School area. So I went Edison, Jim Hill, and then Magic City Camp. I'm the first class to graduate from Magic City Campus.
That's neat.
And my father served on the school board at the time, and in fact, at a very important time in 1969, the flood of 69. We lived on the hill, but interesting enough, everybody had five kids plus, right? So our classes had 30 kids. My graduating class had 725 kids in it.
Wow.
So we were very large classes, lots of kids and the streets, 100 kids on both sides. So during the 69 flood, what did we do? We took the kids in. So now you had thousand square foot homes, 900 to 1,000 square foot homes with 10 kids and four adults. And in addition to that, the strike was going, the teacher's strike.
Okay.
And so I have very, I hate to say font vivid memories of the phone ringing at 3:00 AM and people screaming and shouting at my father because he was serving on the school board at the time.
Okay.
And then the next day he would get up, go to work and then also get on the truck and volunteer to give food out to other areas. My older brother, who was maybe a senior in high school at the time, was helping to sandbag. But school was going on during all of this. So we would cross the picket line. I think that probably is in the back of my mind, all that that was going on, that it takes a village and you need to be involved in community in order to make things run. Anyway, so back to, you know, graduate. I didn't know what I wanted to do, except I knew I have four brothers, okay? And we grew up in an era where females didn't have all the opportunities in the athletic field, right?
Okay.
But I would pound my fist because we had those every dinner, 5:30, there would be those conversations and our, my father and mother engaged us in those. So I'd pound my fist, I said, if, if girls had this, we could do it just as good as the boys.
Yeah.
So that's my growing up, right? Fighting with the, the brothers.
Right. That's, that's fun.
So that summer, I knew I wanted to go to school. I knew I had to pay for school and I didn't know what I wanted to do.
Okay.
And the army was calling because they had ended the draft just a year before, a couple of years before that. And they had a two-year European program, pick where you want to go, do what you want to do. And I'm like, I'm going to Europe.
Yeah.
I'd never been on a plane. I'm going to Europe.
Right.
And there were four of us from high school, two got out in basic training, decided I quit.
Yeah.
Two of us stayed the course and they ended up being a military police.
Okay.
But before I left, we wanted to spend the summer with some of our friends.
Right.
So it was a good friend to block away that went in as well. And so we both lifeguarded that summer. But interesting enough, summer 69, the Minutematters Public Schools, not the Minutematters Public Schools, but the city of Minot Pool, they were going to redo it because it had been flooded. It was this beautiful island pool. It didn't have lanes and stuff. It was a really cool pool.
Right.
So they were renovating it. So the pool that I lifeguarded at that summer was Magic City Campus.
Okay.
Because they were renovating downtown and now they're talking about renovations on the pool again.
That's incredible. Full circle.
I asked the, the park people, I have a point of reference. Do you know when that was done? And they're like, ah, no.
I got this.
Anyway.
Incredible.
So I went in, did basic training. I went in and said, I want to go to Europe. I'm going to go to Germany. And in the end, my friend wanted to be an MP and they said, you're too short. Again, back in the times and the days, and they looked at me and said, you want to be an MP? And I said, well, that sounds interesting.
Right.
So that's what I did. And I pulled duty with the German Polizze, had a 45 on my hip, drove a Jeep. I had never driven a stick shift and we're up and down the hills. And then later served as desk sergeant, deciding what to charge people with when they were brought in. And I got a European out and I backpacked for three months because I'm like, I'm in Europe.
Yeah.
I backpacked for three months before I came home. So I used the Eurail Pass.
That's incredible.
And this is at a time when you didn't have a cell phone.
Right, right.
You didn't have a cell phone.
You're just out in the middle of nowhere.
I have my map and it's a little tattered, but drew in pen my lines about where we went. But we'd get on the train and once we got to the city, that map was no good because that's a map of the countries, right? Well, now we have to figure out, okay, where do we go?
Right.
We also had a youth hostel book and we'd stay in youth hostels.
Okay.
Went up into Norway because we got out in September, you know, got out in September, worked our way down, went down into Morocco and then got home about Thanksgiving time. And I, in a matter of two weeks, bought my first car, got my first job. What, not my first job, I worked in high school. I had enough credits to graduate like my senior year, but they wouldn't let you. You had to go at least one or two classes.
Nice.
So I worked at the bank.
That works.
My dad would pick me up and I worked at the bank. So I've always worked prior to that. I babysat everyone.
Right.
I had four brothers, right? They're all like.
They're used to that.
She can manage four brothers.
Right. She can imagine anything.
Anyway, so come back. Anyway, like I said, I, I got back and got my job, got a job at the bank, enrolled at Minutematters State University, took extra credits because I was focused on the degree.
Yeah. Could you imagine going to Europe on a three month trip right now without any cell phone coverage?
Oh, right?
The way that you, the way that you did. It seems like that'd be a little bit dangerous almost now.
Right. I look forward to going on a trip where I can take my phone and say, wait a minute, say that again.
Right, yeah.
Oh, what did they say?
Exactly.
German really helped us a lot. I learned, I had taken two years of French before I went over there. So I wanted to go to Paris. I wanted to go to France.
Yeah.
And we did go to France and I was able to utilize that. In fact, fun story. We were using the train and the train for the, the information for the English people that are speaking English around the corner. And I'm like, I don't want to wait there. Let's go up to this one. And I go up to the window, nobody's there asking questions. And I said, yeah, I'm going to try my French. And they're like, ah, get away, you know, I'm like speaking English. And I said, well, I'm moment. And I started speaking French, maybe five words.
Okay.
And I had 20 people around me speaking English then.
Wow.
Helping me because I tried, you know.
That's huge.
The lessons, there were big lessons learned back then.
Right.
You know, and even in the army back then, the Biter Meinhoff gang was blowing up cars left and right. We were watching as military police for the Soviet military liaison vehicles, the Smellem, Smellem vehicles on the autobahn with the sickles. And I mean, those were some of the things that we had to keep our eye out for. So got back and, you know, fast forward, my husband's from Montana. He had come over here from Montana and, and we met. Then my folks moved to Omaha and I thought, Omaha, the University of Nebraska has a great criminal justice program. That was where I was headed, criminal justice.
Makes sense.
I'm going. So I left and then he brought, came down with a ring and said, come back. I know you want to do this. We'll wait. And I said, you know, we're older, older back then is not older today.
Right.
And I said, let's, we're going to go back to Minot. I'll finish at Minutematters State and, you know, let's get married.
Right.
So we did. So we did marry. We have lived in our home, oh gosh. When we were pregnant with our first son, we have three sons, four brothers, three sons, right? There's this theme.
Sticks with you.
Yeah, it does. It does stick with me. So anyway, I stayed in the banking industry. He was in the ag industry. He grew up in a ranch in Montana. And so I got to see that flavor and we had our children. We, we lived between Minutematters and Burlington, kind of a rural area at the time, no longer.
Yeah, right.
The two have met in the middle, the two Burlington and Minutematters now have met in the, in the middle.
Got the Dollar General going down, Spartan Firearms or.
Right, yeah, right there.
That's all.
Across, well, Spartan Firearms used to be a fabulous restaurant.
Yeah.
His father, yeah, the Speedway, where my sons worked while they were going to high school and.
Very neat, very neat.
So, yeah, so raised three sons. They're all grown. And one is still here with two grandchildren. One's in Phoenix, got married last fall and the other is in Fargo. So we have four grandchildren, four grand dogs.
Wow.
Yeah.
Incredible. And I know this isn't, well, it could fall in that story. Did be, you talked at the forum about when you actually were inspired to run for Ward County Commission. But along your life's journey, talked about some of that upbringing and even your father being on the school board. Was there something about politics or, and I know that County Commission is, when you say politics, it's the low level politicking and all this stuff like that. But, but has there been an interest of politics that's kind of followed you a little bit?
So I was like to say, when someone says, oh, you're in politics, I say, I'm in a nonpartisan local position.
Yeah.
So it's nonpartisan. I realize that our partisanship do bleed into it, bleed over and can help us with decisions. I actually, when I think back on it, I kind of had forgotten, I was in Young Republicans. We met at First Western Bank when I was in high school.
Yeah.
I had friends that said, hey, you should come to these meetings.
Right.
So I did attend those meetings.
Yeah.
And then politics, you know, in the army, you know, just, I think I was in, what do I want to say? Current events all the time.
Right.
Current events. I read nonfiction.
Okay.
I'm a nonfiction reader. I don't want to read something that, you know.
Right.
I want to read nonfiction.
Yeah.
So always about current events, which then leads into politics because a lot of politics end up the reasons why war. I mean, all the things we studied, you know, war, religion.
Yeah.
And all these other things.
Absolutely. Yeah. Interesting there. So I, I know that you told the story of how you actually decided to run for Ward County Commission the first time, but perhaps some of our viewers haven't heard that. What, what, what inspired you to, to run for this the first time?
Yes. So I was actually at a Chamber of Commerce business after hours.
Okay.
And Bruce Christensen was a commissioner at the time and he was obtaining his 300 signatures.
Okay.
And he was, he turned to my husband and he said, hey, could I get your signature? And important is that Carol Erickson, former police chief in Minot, was a commissioner and he had decided not to run. Just like, kind of similarly, right now, we have Bucky that decided he wasn't going to run. And so they were looking for people to run. And so at this business after hours, Bruce was saying to people, well, maybe you should run. He turned to my husband, he said, hey, would you sign this? And by the way, why don't you run? And he go, my husband's like, no way, no, no interest. And then he said the same thing to me, which I appreciate. I didn't even think about that, but I very much, he said, oh, you should run. I didn't say anything. And I went home that night and I looked at my husband and I said, I think I should run. And, and the reason that I said it was kind of twofold. One, it was 2012.
Okay.
Right? It was 2012, right after the flood. And our, the community, when I say community, the community I'm speaking about right now is my neighborhood, right?
Okay.
About 35 homes were right near the river.
Okay.
But we made the decision, that area has never flooded.
Okay.
And it has never flooded because the people who have lived there have always said, not, we're not going to let it flood. What do we need to do?
Right.
And have gotten busy. At this point, my husband was in construction and a couple of other people down there. And we just got together and said, do we want to save it or what do we want to do? And so we started action. And we started getting the dirt, and, and there's a great story in there as well for another time.
Right.
But so, so we saved it, but then it was the after, right? And we did have to get out of there because the dirt was up. So if the dike, you know, if, if it would have compromised, then it would have been water everywhere. And in addition, our sewer system was connected across the river to the other and it had been compromised there. So we were without that because it had gotten compromised. So, right. So we were out of there for a month, two months, which let me tell you, my heart goes out to everybody else. In no way would I equal what we had to go through to what everybody else who did have the flood went through. But the impact to me was after that, we had meetings and they had the first meeting with our community. And they said, so here's what the dyking looks like, but there's 35 homes. So it doesn't really cost out, right? It doesn't pan out. If we were to put the dike here, we'd have to take out all these homes along the dike. We would be one of about five not taken out. And they're like, it just doesn't pencil out. So we aren't going to do it. And I raised my hand. I said, so are you looking to buy all of us out then? And say, this is going to be a green space? And it was, no, we're not. And it's like, then what are we talking about?
Right, yeah.
So we are left yet to know what will happen in those areas, which is, you know, another segment is all the people along the river. I'm all in favor of flood protection. We need to do it. It's, it's something we really need to. In fact, I serve on the International Service River Joint Board, which is an advisory board really, and not even advisory. We meet to make sure that the, that the guideline, not even the guidelines, but all that is stated in the operations for the dams that we agreed to add on to up in Canada are monitored quality, quantity of water.
Okay.
And the releases, we meet and talk about all of that.
Yeah.
Quarterly.
Quarterly. Got you.
So, yeah. Anyway, back to, you know, our area. We, so now it's flood, you know, now I'm thinking, well, you know, there's some questions about that. Maybe, maybe I could be of use on the commission. But more so, I work for a foundation that was formed from the sale of a hospital and left money here for our community.
Right.
We don't have ties to anyone else. It is a community board of people. And I was asked, at the time I was working, I'd been in banking and then I went to the university because I served on a lot of different committees. And I actually was serving on the foundation board for Minutematters State as a banker when I chose to switch hats and I went to work for the university as their annual fund director.
Okay.
And three years later, when the hospital sold, someone reached out to me and said, would you be interested in getting this foundation started?
Right.
And I said, well, let's talk.
Yeah.
And in the end I said, yes. And so what do we do? You know, we give money, 11 counties, work with 11 counties.
Wow.
To give money for mental, physical, spiritual, emotional wellbeing. Well, Ward County is our largest county.
Right.
And at the time, 12 years ago, we had 80 social service workers and we called them social service workers back then. And I approached my board, my foundation board, and I said, you know, I think that, you know, I'd like to run for this position. And if I do, I think that I will have a better understanding, we will have a better understanding of all the needs there are in the county and how our money can help assist in meeting those needs.
Right.
You know, how can we put our money?
Yeah.
In fact, our very first grant in 98, which is way before I ran.
Right.
Was to the sheriff's department for a defurbulator in their vehicle. Defabs have changed a lot since that time, but at that time it was $12,938.
Wow.
And that put, and they didn't have them in their vehicles.
Yeah.
And they were cumbersome back then, but that was our very first grant.
That's neat.
That's a resource.
Right.
And that is exactly why I got it. It was like, you know, flood, because personally that's where I was. But this was, I think this will help me understand better that side of things.
How long have you been with Inspiritus?
Uh, 26 years.
Wow. That's awesome. That's very neat. Yeah. So, so in 98, that was.
Yes. That's when the hospital sold. Yep.
Very cool. So it all came down to a chamber after hours.
Chamber after hours.
Yeah. How, how have you enjoyed it over the last several years that you, that you have been in?
I have enjoyed it, but let me tell you, campaign times just make me nervous. People are like, ah, you're okay, you're okay. And I'm like, I don't think so.
Right.
I'm not, I never feel comfortable. And that first time when I signed up to run, they're like, we need people to run. Well, then we had some really great leaders step up as well. Alan Walter, you know, Bruce Christensen, I have high respect for.
Yep.
All of a sudden we had five candidates running and I'm like, oh, I didn't think about this.
Right.
And the other O was, oh, it's an election year and lots of people vote in an election year. I was just really surprised at the number of people that came out to vote.
Yeah.
And I, I just had not ever thought about that aspect of it.
Right. And so this year it kind of mimics that a little bit in that on election, on primary day, you were in. There was no questions asked or going into it. There's, there's two people in, maybe somebody was going to have a write-in campaign. And then coming out of it, there's several candidates for three spots. Kind of a weird deal because you were one that had the signatures beforehand and the other candidates were write-in candidates that actually received votes in June. What do you think about that process? Like, it was, when you saw that, is that, and I understand it's a fair process, not questioning that. But I'm asking like, is that like a little bit of a defeating moment, like a little bit of a letdown when you see, oh man, I thought this was going to be an easy campaign year. And now that, mentally, how, how do you, how do you go through that?
Well, I knew, when I knew, I called back, I was in DC for a meeting.
Okay.
And I called back to our auditor at four o'clock my time, which is three o'clock this time. And I said, what does it look like?
Yeah.
How many do we have?
Right.
And she said, there's just two.
Okay.
And I knew immediately, I called our North Dakota Association of Counties Director and asked a lot of questions and said, what, what does that mean?
Yep.
And so the write-in candidate became a possibility. And so then I started talking to people about that. In fact, I belong to the Chamber Infrastructure Committee.
Okay.
And Ron Merritt, I don't know if he shared, if you've talked to him yet, but I shared the story in there about how I first got involved and that we need people to run. And I think it was 10 minutes later, he says, Shelley, can I stop by and talk to you? And he stopped and he goes, you've inspired me.
All right.
I want to run.
There we go.
Yay, great.
You're just creating competitors out there.
Yeah, here we go. So, yeah. And so it was six and now it's down to five. So I've been there before, but I, I'm always nervous about it. I, I never know what the feel out there is.
Right. Yeah. What, what's your campaign process? Door knocking, phone calls? What's your process?
I really reach out, it's, you know, I always, I also served as the District 38 Chairperson.
Okay.
Years back when we were electing Dan and all of them back in 98.
Wow.
I was chair of the district and did that for many years.
Yeah.
And so learned about campaigning.
Right.
And at that level, it's much greater.
Yep.
I, I feel, and maybe all don't feel that way, but I do. I reach out to friends. My first time I ran, I thought, well, I should have signs. I created a website my first year.
Wow.
And, and then I still have my Facebook page for Weppler for commission and just use that for commission to get some things out. But I eliminated the webpage because I didn't want to maintain a whole webpage or pay for a whole webpage.
Yeah.
So right now, what is my, what I do is I reach out to friends. I try to get my signs out. And wherever I have a sign, I have visited with the property owner.
That's good.
Property owner gives me the okay to put a sign where it's at. And that is in every location of my signs.
The way it should be.
Yep.
Yeah. So very, very good. All right. So let's talk about the Ward County Commission. Obviously you have experience here, you, you've felt it. And I want to start here. There's no administrator for the Ward County, which is different. I understand that's not necessarily different among counties. It's, it's the commission.
It's five.
It's five, which, which has got to be scary because it's scary enough to go in front of one boss. It's even worse to go in front of five bosses.
You mean a director?
Right, yeah. A manager, yeah.
Yeah.
So, or, or director. So, but there's, like in the city, we're used to having the, an administrator or city manager. You're used to that in the Minot area, but I understand with counties, it's pretty consistent across the board, but there's not. How have you felt that process has gone and what kind of interaction does that, I'll use the word force, but it's part of the position, the commission to have, what kind of interaction does that force them to have with, with some of those directors? Maybe even behind, when commission's not in session?
It's, it's a very good process.
Okay.
I think you have five people serving as administrator.
Right.
Five people who honestly, I don't see any one of those people out and about.
Okay.
You know, I have more recently because there are candidate forums for a few of them. But it's very interesting that none of us roll in the same circles, right?
Right.
We all have different backgrounds. We all have different thoughts and we all bring different, different bonuses or, or different positive things to the commission. And because you have to have a majority vote, I, I say to people, this is not a me position I'm running for. I'm not, it's not a me position. This is a we position. Overall, the we position for the county, it's, you know, I'm thinking about the county people and all that it is, it's not about me.
Right.
It's about running a business of a county and making sure that we're fiscally responsible and that we don't end up in lawsuits.
Right.
Meaning, you know, one of the things we've done, when I first came in, we did not have an HR manager per se. We had a person in our auditor's office that served as that, but we were in the midst of a lawsuit. There were problems in the jail and yeah, one of the first things we did is said, we must have an HR. We can't, with 300 employees, I think it's under that, 250 to 300.
Wow.
You know, I don't, you got to have an HR to possibly.
Yeah. So one thing we've asked some of, some other candidates is, is it time for Ward County to get an administrator? And I would like your feedback from your position on this, which is going to be a completely different perspective. I, I understand. So does, does, is it time for Ward County to, to get an administrator? 250 plus employees, it's, it's a large, large employer.
Yeah. So I, like I just said, I think the system is good and you're not going to save any money.
Right.
By doing it.
No, you won't.
You're absolutely not going to save any money. And I think that it helps right now that you have five people out in the communities, hearing and listening to people, to different people.
Yeah.
If you had an administrator, they're not going to be out there.
Right.
They're going to be in, you know, in their office more. They aren't out there, you know, listening.
Right.
But it would add costs.
It would.
So what we do right now to manage that is we elect our chair within, every year, we elect it within us. The first meeting after we're elected, so it's the first meeting in December. And then the commissioner, who the chairperson is, then appoints the commissioners to committees.
Okay.
So we have 30 committees, right?
Right.
That we all serve on. Some have one, some have two. If there's two commissioners appointed to a committee, that means it needs to be publicly noticed. So there's some extra steps that you need to make sure. And I think, I'm not sure, but I think the reason that would be is if you're the appointee and you appointed two people, doesn't that make three?
Yeah, yeah.
In a sense.
Right.
I mean, if you've appointed them.
Yeah.
So if two are appointed, if one is appointed, it's not.
Right.
My appointed positions right now are the Veterans Service Office, First District Health. Gosh, I'm on a couple of EDC boards, Burlington, whatever, Human Service Zone Board. And we have two of us on the Human Service Zone Board.
And so you, you mentioned like Burlington and stuff like that. Ward County is a large place. And again, this is Minutematters podcast, we cover a lot of town stuff in, in, in the city of Minot stuff. But you're, you're driving out to Kenmare, you're driving out to, to the, the edges of the county. Your car have a lot of miles on it? Is this like a weekly deal where you're having to make these road trips? Like how involved does it take? We, we get the, the center point of Minot, but going to the stretches, edges, how long does that happen? How often does that happen?
I would say it happens more now. I ate at M and K Pizza in Kenmare.
Okay.
Two nights ago.
So you actually know, see, I asked somebody else, I'm like, give me, give me a restaurant beyond Minot. Tell me, tell me a good restaurant.
I recommend going there. Kenmare is beautiful. I've often drive through there and think about how it overlooks the refuge. The, you know, and you see the, right now, the goose, they have goose fest coming up this weekend. So it's going to be big. This one you should go. If you've not been there, this is the weekend to be up in Kenmare.
Okay.
And you should buy one of their raffle tickets before, because there's a big pickup.
Okay, very neat.
Big pickup that is given away.
That's worth it right there. Absolutely.
And as you drive through Carpio and Downey Brook.
Right.
Fox Home on your way there, the, the bar in Fox Home is very popular. They, they have some good bingo.
Okay.
I understand, big pots.
The Hunter's Den?
Hunter's Den in Fox Home, right there. You can't miss it.
Right.
I haven't actually popped in there yet.
Okay.
I need to do that. I've had friends that have said, hey, you need to come.
Yeah.
Join.
Right, yeah. So very cool. So you do have a good restaurant.
And then I also get out and about and I'm communicating with people in those communities.
Right.
Because again, the hats that I wear really intermingle and we have an initiative with the Foundation for Food Pantries. So we serve 31 food pantries in our 11 counties, which means we have one almost in every city. So Kenmare, there's areas that we're funding. We've been funding the fire department for years and through the twice blessed.
Wow.
Anyway.
That's very neat.
I want to have another opportunity to visit out that with you and don't want to.
Right.
Put a whole lot of that in here right now.
Absolutely. So a lot of coverage and part of, you get to drive those roads, but then you guys, one of the key responsibilities of the county is also maintaining those roads. And you made a comment about that at the forum that the chamber put on, Chamber EDC put on. So walk us through that. Like we get roads and they're, to the citizen, roads are typically boring until the road is not boring, which then means that there's a problem with the road, right?
Same.
Same. Yeah. So, so is there, to talk about the infrastructure, is there's things that need to be happening with the roads? Are there more developments that need to happen? Are, are we in a good place? What does the future look like there?
First of all, I am very proud of our highway engineer. First of all, I am very proud of our highway engineer. I think we're very fortunate in our county with. A lot of our directors that have been hired and that that makes us as good as we are.
Right.
Because we need to do, they're out there doing the work, right?
Yeah.
And telling us about issues or problems and I have not heard that much from people about. You know, issues that are out there, but on a snow day, you will.
You're gonna get a call.
You will start hearing. But the issues right now, I think what's really, for me, the most. I said earlier, one of the most compelling reasons I want to continue is I feel like I need to get to the end of the finish line.
Okay.
And that finish line is, timing is everything. I was elected in two thousand and twelve. When the people had voted to have the half cent sales tax put into play. So that we could expand the jail, build the jail, which was so necessary.
Right.
And then also to build the admin building. And I know I hear people say, oh, buildings, you're building government. We had people stretched all over this community. Our social service workers were up north in in what I say was kind of a rat maze building. There are no windows. They had these little offices and they weren't connected.
Right.
And things have changed since then. I mean, now the state pays for all of it, but back then. You know, that's what we were looking at is saying, hey, how can we get everybody in one? We had people in coat closets and broom closets.
Wow.
Everywhere else. Well, you imagine, if you go into that courthouse, that's where everything was and that needed updates too. So there were updates to the courthouse and then we were told we needed to have fire suppression, even though it's all marble and.
Right.
And that added another amount on to it.
So the county and the city got a fight.
We did have a little, little. A little ta ta tat about, well, it wouldn't be the county and the city. It would be the fire department.
Right.
One of the fire chiefs earlier had said, okay, go and and then the next and.
That's a good time.
We we did need to, you know, replace doors and do a whole lot more than originally was called for. But then that led into us saying in twenty twenty. We started looking at and saying, man, this sales tax is going to end and it wasn't paying off enough of what we needed to see it paid off. So we went back to the people. So timing is everything. Here I was, I had no idea. I'm like, oh, I get to help with the building of these and. Look at what, you know, what should be in it and what shouldn't. And then. Understanding and saying, well, we need to extend this and we need to promise that once we pay everything off, it's going to go to roads.
Okay.
We need all the help we can get, right? We want another source. So all the buildings people need to remember were all paid by the half cent sales tax.
Okay.
First of all, however, you do need to maintain them. So indeed, it certainly costs more to maintain them than it did back when we just had the courthouse.
Right. Go ahead and.
So the the half cent sales tax then was approved in twenty twenty. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty two. And we promised in there and said, once we pay off, then the money goes to roads. And we actually, and we did pay it off last spring.
That's awesome.
So I feel like, yay, you know, we've.
Right.
There's these goals and the finish line is just over here. And I just really would like to be able to be involved. When we hit that finish line, not only roads, bridges, we've been addressing bridges as well. And then we've also been studying the needs of our area and the southwest corridor. We've had meetings about it. We're going to have public meetings coming up here soon about what that southwest corridor could do for us. And that will involve, it's not just us when you start talking about that. It's state, it's, you know, federal.
Yeah.
Collaboration is key. Again, back to that we.
Right.
It's all about we. It's about we, you know, managing the county administration. It's about we when it comes to local legislators visiting with county officials. We all need to work together.
Right. Very, very good. So collaborating, we'll go down that road for a minute. It's been talked about, about. The idea of combining the Ward County Library and the Minot Public Library. And maintaining the bookmobile that goes out to the different towns in Ward County. Another idea could be combining the municipal court with the courts that are at Ward County as well. I I don't think the municipal court is used all that often comparatively. It's not where they're in session for eight hours a day. What what are your thoughts sitting, hearing the discussions? I I know that the public library has come up before, at least before the council. What what are your thoughts on the, on looking for opportunities to collaborate with the city of Minot specifically? And attempt to maybe save both the city and the county money?
I think it's always good to have those discussions. And we've had the discussions on both of these pieces and did offer up on the courts. We offered up space in different areas.
Okay.
And it wasn't what was wanted. So so we have had discussions and said, well, this space is available or this. So I I know that we've talked through that, walked through that. I don't know how hard it got down to the end.
Yeah.
But we certainly have had those conversations and would welcome more conversation about that. That's what I would say. And when it comes to the library, same thing. I do remember back when they were looking at the library. They were looking at adding on to the Minot Public Library as well. And then the thought was, well, that adds on to the cost then for the county people as well. In the midst of an add on. So it it got to a point where it just had to rest, I think. I think the other concerns that we heard from our constituents was they felt like the bookmobile would go away. To me, that is the A number one important part.
Right.
That library is the bookmobile.
Yeah.
And if we can collaborate, and I think we even talked when we were having those discussions with the library, we talked about where are we going to park it then? And where are we going to do this? And where where does that go? And where do you load?
Yeah.
Because that's an issue, even when we were adding on. The library used to be its own entity and we did some swap with the Minot Daily News. Because our library was over closer to them.
Okay.
And where we have the jail addition and the parking lot was theirs.
Oh, interesting.
And we really should have done the jail first, but we needed to take a moment and figure out how that was going to happen.
Right.
So there was discussion, land swap, and that's why the library ended up in the facility. And we added on the top floor. The top floor, the top floor was always there, but it was supposed to be there as a shell.
Okay.
And back then, when this started coming up and the discussions about where is everything going to lie, where is it going to go? We looked at it and said, well, I think it was one point four million at the time to frame out the top and get it all going. And let's get the library on the lower level.
Right.
And that was, that's what we decided. And I can't even imagine the cost today of what that would be.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, definitely interesting because people.
Again, all tax dollars.
All tax dollars.
I.
Or sales.
Sales tax dollars is what I want to make sure everyone, yeah.
Right.
That is sales tax.
Because the budget obviously is something that if if people get concerned about the roads and concerned about all these things, but it seems like. Uh, the budget is something that really draws the ire or or admiration of a lot of citizens. You guys have, obviously, are near the end of your, you guys have approved your budget for this coming year. Do you feel like the county is, like, how how efficient do you feel like the county is being with the budget at this? Or is there room for improvement? I I know improvement takes time when it comes to budgets. So there's nothing wrong with there being room for improvement, but how how do you feel like? That has gone in your experience?
We have been using a hatchet from day one. I mean, I've been on there since two thousand and twelve. And back in two thousand and twelve, we saw a lot of reserve funds in each department.
Okay.
Each department was holding reserve funds.
Right.
And we really would have a budget line item for reserve of seventy five thousand dollars, let's say. Hundred thousand was the commission contingency, we called it. And it was our accountant that drew to our attention. Four or five years ago and he said, you know, you guys really should have a reserve fund. You're allowed to have it up to, you know, I don't know if it's seventy percent. Of your budget. You, you can have it up to that, but you really should consider that. So every year, we would hatch it away. At the individual budgets and we didn't need to raise it much. I mean, we would be like, okay, come back to us. What do you think you can do? Let's, let's see where we can tighten this up. So I feel like we are very tight with the budget. And then we then now have built up to one point five million in reserves.
Okay.
Which for a county our size is is not a lot, but I feel like that's adequate. And and that's the conversation with our departments is, we hold that responsibility. If you find yourself in need. Let's say, for instance, the state's attorney's office. Right now, we're finding ourselves needing to pay over budget. Why? Because we are having change of venue of several of our murder trials are needing to be changed.
Right.
The citizens bear that cost.
Wow.
Because we need to house them.
Yep.
We need to get them there. We need to then feed them, people who might have been here and attending. So that is a mandate, you know, in.
Yeah.
In Centricote, you know, it says if you, if you move the venue, we're still responsible.
Okay.
And and all the attorneys have to get over there as well. So all the witnesses, depending on the number of witnesses, that can add up really fast.
Wow.
So. I mean, it it kind of leads into, you know, talking about the budget. I feel like we're really tight and I I almost would like to segue. Into what, what can we do? At this point, where we're at is we would need to be cutting people.
Right.
Right?
We need to. That's not always the answer.
I can tell you, I mean, the jail, when we first started, when we were building, you know, in two thousand and eleven, the numbers have doubled. As to who is in the jail.
Wow.
And. We can't, the interesting part about a county jail is a state jail knows their numbers because they're all people who are serving sentences.
Okay.
We house those that are arrested the night before.
Right.
We have this door that fluctuates in and out and there are people who are waiting to be. To figure out what their sentence might be or what a charge might be. So so it's a very reactive.
Right.
Situation.
Yeah.
And and we can look at it and we can say, well, here's what the average of our numbers are, but.
Yeah. I can see that as being, being a little bit difficult. So something got brought up at the forum. I refer, I referenced the form a lot and I apologize, but it got brought up and it was an idea by another candidate. And I would love to hear your take on it, addressing it specifically. And that was the, how much is paid out in insurance for the commissions, commission? Now, to be fair, there's no administrator. We already talked about that. And you're going to have a high, not only employment cost, but you're also going to have a high insurance costs there. But do you, why is this in place? And do you feel like it is a good thing it that it's doing its job for whatever reason it is in place?
Thank you for the question. And I remember that question specifically, of course. And it is a nice benefit of being a commissioner. To be able to know that you have health insurance. And health insurance is one of our biggest costs.
Right.
So I think specifically it was said, I don't understand why the the person said. Part-time people do not get health insurance, so I don't know why the commissioners should get health insurance.
Right.
Two parts of that. One, part-time people do get health insurance.
Okay.
Time people get paid for their health insurance based on their number of hours. So it's pro rata, right?
Right.
It's based on hours. So if they work twenty hours, then it's prorated. And this is how much health insurance you get. So indeed, they are a part of the health insurance plan.
Yeah.
If they're a temp worker, no. I mean, we have a lot of temp workers that work in the summertime, but part-time people, yes, are part of the health insurance plan. Is a commissioner a part-time person?
I think you can only answer that question because that's a question I have is how many hours does it take a week? Seems like it's got to be a lot.
Well, it certainly varies and I pride myself in reading everything. When I come to the meetings, I'm ready.
Yeah.
A detailed person and I like plans.
Okay.
Okay, so I.
It flows well.
Like to make sure that I know what's going to be coming.
Right.
That meaning, I don't always, even if you read everything, you you may not know it.
Absolutely.
But. I. If my number is out there, you can Google me. I don't know if you did, but you have my number in a heartbeat.
Right.
So is a person who is on call twenty four seven, a part-time person?
Right.
That's the question.
Yeah. And and even part-time, does it take twenty hours a week? Or does it take a lot more than that?
It depends.
It depends.
It depends. This week it felt like it took, yes. I also serve on the city county liaison committee and I went to the NPO meetings.
Right.
You know.
I mean, we.
Alternate on the NPO meetings, so.
We've talked with city councilmen and and women, but but we, it was some of the city councilmen that said, yeah. Like, it's twenty hours and some of the new ones is, you know, twenty hours is kind of what you're expecting, but they're spending thirty, thirty plus hours because there's issues that arise and you can't just say, well. I'm out. You got to address those issues.
Yeah, an email that came this week. In fact, I went to the rodeo last weekend.
Okay.
And went through the vendor show and one of the constituents from Berthold had a question of me and I said, you know what? I said, so I have all the data correct. Would you please email me? Gave her my card.
Right.
And said, please email me. So I have data to go on. And so she did. And we probably had three, four emails back and forth. And then I also. Uh, conversed with the department head that she was asking questions of, not the department head, of the issue that would lie in that. Area planning and zoning.
Okay.
So, yeah, how much time does it take? I'm I'm not clocking it down, but.
A lot.
Yeah, you're out and about and all of a sudden.
Yeah. So going back to the health insurance is is a part, is a commissioner, a part-time person. It it's difficult to 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 say, but it feels like it's probably well earned. The 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 health insurance?
I would say it's a good benefit to have.
Right, good.
Now, I will say this. So when I first started on the commission. We did not have a hundred percent of the health insurance paid.
Right.
And the reason we went to a hundred percent because the things that were happening when I first was elected on the commission. I mean, not only did we have really tough stuff going on in the jail, but the oil industry was pulling our workers.
Okay.
And we were challenged with, how do we keep up with pay for this? How do we keep our employee, our employees were leaving?
Wow.
And how do we, you know, and health insurance was one of those items. And so it was brought up. I will tell you, my vote was, I was in HR in the banking industry. I said, let's, let's start with five, you know, let's go from sixty five to seventy now. And.
Yeah.
But I was outvoted and and we went the full bore because it's, once you go there, it's hard to go back.
Right, yeah.
So we are having very hard conversations and this year we just moved to a self-insured plan.
Okay.
We're, we're doing that and we did that so we could help reduce the potential for increase every year. Feeling that we would be able to collect some of those pharmaceutical kickbacks. They will come back to us.
Gotcha.
So we made that decision this year and that will help us in the budget. And.
Yeah.
I look forward to seeing that.
Right. I think something to be remembered on this is, is that you're working with farmers. You're working with people like that, that would be running for commission, not just people that are within the city of Minot. So if it was a benefit for the city of Minot. Uh, council members, it'd be different because it, there is an expectation. They probably are working a local job for a company. They might be a small business owner. Something like that. But farmers, I mean, i- if there's a farmer that's running for commission, they're they're not getting health insurance. So it's a huge benefit. A huge reason why they might would consider running.
Absolutely.
Um, so it, I think it's different.
And there are a lot of jobs that don't. I mean, I have a full-time job.
Right.
Outside of this, you know, so I have two full-time jobs. And and I think that keeps me, I mean, they keep me active and keep me vital. I mean, I love what I do.
Yeah, absolutely. Two full jo- time jobs, family.
Yeah, yes.
Do you get any personal time?
Yeah, you know, we go to the rodeo.
Yeah, but that didn't work out for you.
Well, it it did work out. I love that when that happens.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, in December to the national finals.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Come sometimes.
Okay, yeah, very neat. It's a question that I was going to ask is, do you ever, some days be like, yeah, I'm not going out to eat tonight. C- because you you're, you don't want to run into people. Do you get the, it's a full-time job. It's an, it's not a full-time job. It's an all-the-time job. Do you feel that pressure as you go around the city or do you just love it, the county?
I don't feel pressure and I'm always surprised when somebody at Menards comes up.
Yeah.
Recogn, I'm like, I don't feel recognizable, I guess.
Okay.
And I'm always like, oh, I guess I better watch what I'm doing because everybody's watching.
Exactly.
And I, it always surprises me when someone.
Right.
Will just pull me aside. I went to the flea market again and had a good conversation with someone who knew and and it surprises me.
Yeah, no, that's, that's very neat. Alright, so we talked about the budget. It sounds like it, there's been a lot that's been hacked out. One and a half million reserves, low number you said is probably adequate. Are you, are you fine with that amount? Or do you feel like that needs to grow a little bit over the next how, however long?
Yep, good question. And I feel like the other reason, so it's a good question. And I feel like that's something to be determined at each budget.
Okay.
It's something that we can look at and say, do we need this much this year? Can we allocate this somewhere else?
Right.
Secondly, I made the comment, and I think it's good to note that when there are emergencies. there's money that seems to come in from other avenues.
Okay.
Federal, you know, that that seems to be available. And and that really, the ARPA dollars that were during COVID, right? The ARPA dollars, we ended up with a lot of ARPA dollars and it was decided by the commission that we would open that up for applications and grants. So there were a lot of agencies funded that we don't typically fund because we had ARPA dollars.
Yeah.
And so those ARPA dollars helped those organizations. First, we said townships for infrastructure, water infrastructure. And so these ARPA dollars are helping a lot of our townships to improve their infrastructures. And then there were a few nonprofits that had applied. I'm sure you've heard of Project B.
Right.
And I would like to have have a full discussion on that because I probably have a different take. But you know, first of all, that project exists because the city back, because of the flood, wrote a grant to, you know, an NDR grant. And a piece that was approved was you need to have this housing. And so Lutheran Social Services stepped up and said, well, we'll be that person.
Yeah.
And Lutheran Social Services went bankrupt. Who knew? Who thought that would ever happen?
Yeah.
And then at that time, the director of Project B said, I think maybe we could do that. And so she stepped up and said, we will do that.
And turns out that project is just not one you want to touch.
It's, yeah. So I'm really excited for the city to come up with, you know, I don't know how they're going to get someone to manage that, but that's where it all came from. Is that NDR grant.
Right.
You know, that that the people in our community said, here are our needs. And then at the federal level, they said, we love this. Yes, you got to, this is a piece of your project.
Yeah. So it brings an interesting thing, though. I I understand that there's the backstory for the Project B, but tying it into TIFs too. So the times when there's the grant given or there's this TIF, tax increment financing, the these different ways of helping businesses or helping nonprofits. When, when is it the county's place to step in and provide a benefit? So the example that we use, and I think it's a fair example, despite what has happened, and that's the Big M Building. And now you see Project B, which is again, one that you would not have anticipated exactly what happened there to have happened. When is it the county's place to step in and when is it not?
Sure. And so again, with Project B, those were not county property tax dollars. They were not sales tax dollars. They were ARPA fund dollars. And we are looking to make sure that that's all made whole.
Yeah.
And so we're continuing to work on that. When it comes to the Big M Building, I have, the take that I have on it is there are different reasons for TIFs. And we're not involved in a lot of the city TIFs. It has to reach a certain threshold before it comes to us. And this one came to us and we've been sitting with that building vacant
Yep.
For many, many years.
Yeah.
And part of the county's responsibility is if you have a building that is blighted or that nobody's going to have and all of a sudden you need to tear it down, the county is responsible. I don't care if it's in the middle of the city. So I look at that Big M Building, which was Metropolitan Federal when I was growing up, Midwest Federal.
Yeah.
And you know, this beautiful big skyscraper building, skyscraper in Minot, right? And and now where we've come with it, I was really excited about what they were going to do. And I, these were my exact words. I said, whether it does come to fruition or doesn't in the end, this is a blighted building and the money that we're giving a tip for, the the relief on property tax is to be used to get rid of the asbestos.
Right.
And if we get rid of the asbestos, don't we have a building that may be more saleable?
Right.
I mean, if we don't, then we need to tear it down. We're looking at a building in Kenmare right now. We just tore one down in Kenmare not that long ago. And the citizens bear the brunt of that. That comes out of citizens' dollars. Right. Out of the property tax dollars.
Is that a fair process? It is so random. When you find out the little things that are big things, but, so I shouldn't call them little, I'll call them random. The random things that falls on the county. So you're in the, the Big M Building is in the dead center of Minot, right? The Minot has taken most of the benefit of the building over the years. And if it needs to be torn down, then the county gets to get involved. It makes sense for in the middle of, between Bobells and Carpio, that there's something that needs to be torn down. But for in a city like that, should there be a little bit disclaimer or something?
Yeah, right in the middle of Kenmare, right in the middle of Minot, wherever it's in the middle of, but that's what Century Code says, right? And therein lies, I wrote a resolution and I know that Commissioner Feldal also, we both have written resolutions and sent them to our North Dakota Association of Counties. I wrote mine a couple of months ago. And the resolution that I wrote said, and and I don't know what will happen with four. It's where it needs to be, as far as I'm concerned, right? It's in the vote of the people. That's where it needs to be. I would like to see more of a plan, but it's in the vote of the people. That's where it should be. The people need to decide. But if we move on, and I shouldn't have gone backwards because now I'm like, what direction was I going?
That resolution that was sent to the
Yes. So the resolution I sent was, we have a lot of exemptions in the county.
Yeah.
There are people that don't need to pay, whether whether it's because they can't afford it and they get homestead credit Right. uh, because of their income. And you know, there's the farmstead exemption. There's a lot of exemptions and there's also exemptions, nonprofit exemptions. I work for a nonprofit. We don't get in, we rent, you know, we aren't getting exemptions.
Right.
But churches and hospitals, those are big pieces of property.
Right.
And we are paying that. We're basically, we're saying that's kind of a infrastructure for better health, right? We're saying, okay, all of us are going to pay that amount. But it's the century code that says that those are exempted.
Okay.
So if the century code says that, I say, isn't that a really easy low-line fruit to identify and say, hey, state, let's use the funding that is at the state and let's use it towards those exemptions.
Right.
And if we had that, we could then lower
Yep.
The amount that everyone, it would be equalized
Right.
As as we're supposed to be doing right now, right?
Yeah.
Making it more equal across the board, but we have these exemptions and they're expensive exemptions, you know, the university.
Right. I mean, Trinity itself would be a huge, just that. So basically you're saying, have the state, on the subject of property tax, have the state pay for the exempt entity, such as hospitals, such as churches, such as nonprofits, have the state pay that to the taxing authorities, which then they stay exempt, the state's able to pitch in and lower the property taxes across the board for all the citizens.
Right. Because it's an identifiable piece and it's stated in the century code.
Yeah.
Hey, county, this is what you're going to pay for. And and the one that Feldal is suggesting is the building one, that tear down the buildings, really? As as you just outlined, you said, well, it's in the middle of the city. Well, that's what Century Code says. Well, why?
Right, right.
Should we also get funding to help us with that?
Yeah.
In fact, we used to use funds from the sale of the properties and we would have a fund, a line item. And that's what we would use for that. And then a few years ago, the state said, oh, no, that all has to come to the state.
Oh, wow. Wow. So the sell the property goes to the state? That's wrong.
If there's any amount over the taxes that are owed, over the taxes that are owed. And so we quit charging more over the taxes. Now we just charge whatever taxes are owed.
Yeah, the back tax. So
But we used to be able to have a more reasonable price for something.
Right.
I know there are a lot of people buying up properties in Kenmare. They look like wonderful properties near the school, you know, for 700 bucks.
Wow, that's crazy.
A piece of property. I mean, it's bare, but
Yeah, still, it's it's land. Yeah, right. That's incredible. Did not see that coming. That was, that was a fun turn. I do have this question for you, though. Obviously, you've been on this for, since 2012. You've seen things happen. What are maybe top two or three priorities that you have as you go into this, into this next term?
Well, priorities, and that's hard, is to carry out. Well, there is one that we haven't talked about, talked about right now. But the one would be to move forward with our half-cent sales tax on roads.
Okay.
And the southwest quarter. Let's, let's look at that, right? That's one. Another one, we decided several years ago that we would file a litigation lawsuit against the pharmaceutical companies, opioid litigation lawsuit. And we are reaping the benefits of that litigation and we're getting money in. And so we formed a task force, not quite a year ago, we formed a task force, made up of a couple of commissioners, first district health, and a lot of the the resources that work in the area of drug addiction.
Okay.
And we formed that task force and we have been visiting since last January as to what can we do with this? And the jail commander is driving it really and saying, well, here's what we do. Right now, people that come in and they're addicted, if they're on a program, they get to continue that program. But if you come in and you're not on a program, we can't institute a program for you.
Okay.
Okay, yes. And we've seen a lot of things come in and out. And I know we had the state come in and give us a presentation and oh my gosh, they're doing this expensive program that we don't even see in our future at all. There's a drug that they use and they also are different, as I talked about earlier, where I said, they are able to say, okay, these people are going to be in here for this longer term and this one, we can start this and and we'll get them weaned off. The program that we're looking at would include the opioid methadone clinic.
Okay.
And that's what's being used right now. But we would, we currently have a couple hundred thousand dollars that are able to use for that. And we did not pass in the budget that it would be a position because that's, that's a balancing act, right? Is, do you add on that position? Or what to do? Right now, we have the position being funded solely with the dollars from the opioid litigation. And the city has teamed up and put their dollars with as well. They also filed the lawsuit and the city, the police, of course, all the people end up in the jail if the police pick them up or the sheriff. So we're looking at this program as a program that wraps its arms around these people. It doesn't just give the methadone. There are more pieces to it. It is a wraparound service program. It is a program that will allow some peer support, communications, so that once they're out, that they can move forward with their life. And hopefully have a job, hopefully, you know, those are the hopes.
That's huge.
We have a tracking mechanism on it right now. The police have been tracking their folks and they've been able to track. And they're going, they've said that they would do that for for the program. So I want to see that
Right.
Come through as well. Because that, we started, it was like quicksand. When we first started, we just invited everybody to the table and it's like, well, what do we do? Where do we go? What do we do? And we were just chatting about, you know, what what happens. And when I say we were chatting, really, I was the back. I I don't have that knowledge.
Yeah.
But I could say, well, okay, we need to make sure this, what we have, we got to put numbers together.
Right.
You know, put, you got to start somewhere. That was the hard part. Well, how much is it? I said, you give, you say in these meetings, well, your averages, you average, I said, you just have to put it in black and white. We have to see it in black and white.
Yep.
So that's one to watch to see where that goes, but
For sure. No, that's a great subject. We didn't talk a lot about about it. But no, it's a very, another important role that the that the county plays.
It is. And again, those dollars are not tax dollars. The dollars that we have allocated for this right now are opioid litigation dollars. And also we had a gal who started with this and she became a fellow in a program. And that program came out with a hundred thousand dollar grant and she came to us and said, I'm going to put it towards this.
Okay. And that's incredible. Yes.
That is really great. That's community support.
Right, yeah, absolutely. Well, it's been a fun time. It's been a good interview. As we come to a close, maybe, how can somebody get in touch with Shelley? I know it's not hard, but sometimes somebody just needs to hear it in black and white.
Well, there's a couple of ways. Just put my name in there and you'll have a phone number for me. It's a public number. You could go on the county website. My number's on the county website. You also, I do have a county Facebook page. So Ward County, Shelley Webster for Ward County Commissioner, you could reach me there. You can go on my Facebook page, reach out to me.
Yeah.
Uh, but give me a call, 701-721-6979.
There it is. And I'll ask one more question. November 5th, obviously people have probably already voted, but why should someone vote for you for another term?
I think I bring a different perspective to the commission right now. And I want to continue that so that I can continue programs that we started right now and carry them out to the end. I also will always make sure, as I said, I have resolutions in right now to the North Dakota Association of Counties. However this ends up, I'm excited to see how we move forward, whether Measure Four passes or it doesn't. There's going to be more conversations about how we can reduce the taxing ability and the taxing amounts to our constituents.
Very good. Well, thank you for coming on today.
Thank you very much for having me.
Appreciate it. Thank you for watching this episode of My Not Matters here at the Decode and brought to you by Shox, Siffenlock. I'm Jonathan Starr. Be sure to like and subscribe on YouTube, become part of the Decoding community. You can also check out all these episodes at mydecoding.com or on YouTube. Thank you for watching. Have a great day.